This regular meeting of February 14, 2022, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohoska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the regular meeting on January 10, the special meeting of February 1st, the special meeting of February 7th, the special meeting of February 8th, and the special meeting of February 9th, 2022, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 10, the special meeting of February 1st, the special meeting of February 7th, the special meeting of February 8th, and the special meeting of February 9th, 2022, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you. So we have a board salute.
Okay, I have one, yes. A board salute goes out to the Hempstead High School swimmer, George Holsinger, who medaled four times at the state high school swim meet this weekend. George finished third in the 100-meter freestyle and fourth in the 200-meter freestyle. He was also part of the 200-meter freestyle relay team, which also included senior Aiden Yakic, sophomore Brandon Decker, and senior Mitchell Konchak, that finished eighth. And the 400-meter freestyle team, which included sophomore Michael Rett, Aiden Yakic, Brandon Decker, Michael Rett Gilbertson, I guess is the correct terminology or correct name. I'm sorry. Anyway, they finished seventh. George's score earned in automatic All-American honors in the 100 meters and during the state meet also set Hempstead School records for the 100 and 200 meters. Congratulations to George and the Mustang swim team. So our new pool paid off and I guess the times were really and the times were really fast in the state swims, from what I heard. Yes, so very good. Congratulations.
And another board salute.
If there are another?
Yeah.
That was the only one that we had.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the Board Oh, not yet. Oh, okay.
So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kolker and then eventually to Chelsea. But in February is when we recognize this year's Teacher of the Year because it's Teacher Appreciation Month. And so this year, Chelsea Cox was the award winner, Teacher of the Year. And what a fitting year for Chelsea to win it. Chelsea, for many of you and Mr. Kolker, I'll try not to steal any of your talking points, is an outstanding employee who has worked with kids at all levels in the school district. And most recently is at Hempstead working with our high school students, particularly at a time when there's been a pandemic and with all the social, emotional needs. This is exactly the perfect year to recognize somebody with Chelsea's skill set. She's awesome. I can tell you that from my own kids and the other kids that I know who benefit from her work. So we're thrilled to give this to Chelsea and I'm going to turn this over to Lee and let him do the official and then we'll do some pictures here in a minute.
All right. Well, I'll give Chelsea some microphone time as well, but we're so honored to have Chelsea recognized. First, she's taken care of the adult and student's social and emotional needs throughout these last years, especially this last year. Chelsea has great ideas. She's always thinking about ways to move us forward and she's not afraid to lead those ideas as well. So congratulations, Chelsea.
I was told I didn't have to say anything, but I just, thanks. I mean, this is not just me. I mean, I have a pretty fantastic team of people I work with, from my colleagues and students and families and everybody I've met. And this is my 20th year with the district and so I've had some really, really great relationships these last 20 years that have helped me do what I can do every day. So I'm pretty lucky to be a school counselor right now and yeah, thank you for that. Thanks for their recognition.
Thank you, Chelsea.
I was so short in the last picture.
You could. I'd be tempted.
I was so short.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Persons wishing to address the board can do so at this time if you would like to come up to the microphone and state your full name and your association with the district. The three-minute time limit on any remarks. Come on up.
Have to go to the mic?
Yes.
Yes.
It's the only way they can hear you on the television.
They could hear me, trust me. My name is John McGrane. I'm a para here with Dubuque Community School Districts. What I want to ask is, do you guys know what the poverty level is? Price-wise. Seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. As a para, last year, I brought home seventeen thousand. I'm below poverty level and I work for a great district. Next question. Do you know that Cedar Rapids gave their paras a $3 raise? They gave all their full-time employees a $750 bonus. Part-time employees got $550. Also, they gave their paras $685 a month to pay for their benefits. Waterloo gave a $550 bonus and another $500 if you signed a contract for next year. Why can't we collect unemployment during the summer? Do you know that as a single para with one child, your rent would be $675? That's roughly. That's bottom dollar right now going rate. That equates to you pay out $8,900 for 12 months. That leaves you with a total of $8,100 to live off for a year. As a single parent, could any of you do that? I highly doubt it because we have a hard time doing it. You take on a second job. What happens? Most of your money goes to daycare. What I'm asking for is to bring us up to a level above poverty level. It's not that hard. Other schools have been using the ESSR funds to get their paras and their employees, not just the paras, but their other employees as well. Bonuses for working through the pandemic. We're there every day. Every day, we are with those kids, one-on-one. We love it. The kids are our life. But we're asking for something too. We just want more money. Anything to get us above poverty level. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Rasika Mudalige. I am here to talk as a parent and also as an educator for the last 14 years. I have been in higher education for the last 25 years in this country. So I am here to talk about book banning. Whose idea is this? Iowa was very much number one in education. We don't ban books. This is a bad idea. Next time, what are you going to ban? Are you going to ban evolution from teaching, being taught in science curriculum? Are you going to ban climate change? And then some of the books are banned because of explicit sexual content. How many of you know what your child is doing on your cell phone? How many of you know your child is doing on cell phone? This is what gives you actual there's explicit sexual content to teach kids, not a book. I have read some of the books that were banned. None of them have anything that is offensive. And then the other one is that it gives discomfort to the child. Did you ask your children whether it gives discomfort to them? Or is it give discomfort to you, the parent? Because when you hear about the inequity of education, inequity, social inequities, do you think that the student get discomfort? Or do the parents get discomfort? When they realize they didn't do anything about it during their time? And I know the new students who are coming up, that's my hope because they are the ones who actually passionately talk about equity, passionately talk about climate change, passionately talk about having a future for themselves. We are destroying their future to have comfort for ourselves. Think about it seriously. And then I am really, really dedicated my life for the last 14 years to educate your children. I'm asking you only one thing. Educate my child with the same care, same thought. I'm not sending my child to give just a bunch of facts and education. Some, you know, I don't know, civilized version of history. Every country has bad black marks. Every country has bad things that has happened in the past. You teach them because you do not repeat it in the future. And you teach it to your children so that children do not repeat. They do not repeat a civil war. They do not repeat putting down children, putting down the children because of race or because of any other reason. I'm an immigrant to this country. I want my child to learn the actual history as it happened. I know more about the history of this country by reading than my child, who is learning from this country.
I'm sorry. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michael Pete. I am the president of the Dubuque Soccer Club Board of Directors. I have a couple other guys here with me supporting the soccer organizations in Dubuque. I was at the facilities meeting last week Monday and you guys tabled the discussion on the sale of the soccer complex until after the March facilities meeting. I have two requests. One, when this facility and its sale is discussed, it needs to be discussed in more than financial terms. So we serve more than 1,000 kids every year at that soccer complex, teaching valuable life skills just like all other sports can teach more than just the sport. Okay? And then I want you to also consider the amount of investment from both, all of the organizations throughout the years to that complex and the community in both volunteer hours and in financial means. So in the last 30 years that we've been out at that complex, there's been more than a million dollars spent in maintaining it and making it what it is and that doesn't count any volunteer efforts. And that's very significant. So those are the first request. And then the second request is when you do bring this to the facilities working group, I would request that the soccer organizations get an open seat on the agenda when that is discussed. Those are the requests that I have today. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member would want removed from the consent agenda? All those in favor approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so we're to Facilities and Support Services report from Ms. Whitman.
Okay. I will highlight the, what we went over in our facilities meeting. First of all, Jacob Blanchard, a Boy Scout, proposed to build 27 PVC pipe displays for his Eagle Scout project and this will be done and donated for Lincoln Elementary School. We reviewed purchased professional service contracts with Crayola Software and with Tyler Technologies. The Tyler Technologies is for, to purchase driver tablets and mounts for school buses. We had an update by Ken Johnson from Straka Johnson Architects, an update on the senior building. He indicated that the project is 27% complete. Areas where the performance PE and wrestling room are all enclosed and winter work is being done. The theater area, it's fully enclosed and winter work is being done. And the projects are on schedule and are on budget. Hempstead School intercom replacement, we have an update from that. And we had an update from the central kitchen mechanical system replacement. Hempstead High School kitchen freezer replacement, we had an update on that. The Hoover Elementary School boiler replacement. It was recommended that we just replace the burner for now on that project. We had a discussion from Straka regarding solar study update to determine the reasonability of putting solar PV arrays to offset the demand for, to reduce electrical costs. We have it on our building next door and we're looking at other buildings if it would be cost efficient for us to go forward with that. We had an update on center districts. Soccer complex appraisal, that came to our attention. The value came in. There was two values on this. For the residential, of looking at it as residential property, the value was 1,552,000. If you're looking at it as commercial use, the value was 1,170,000. We had a review on the tax levy for 2022, 2023. And we also had a review for the statewide voluntary preschool program enrollment for 2021 and 2022 school year, resulting in a decrease in the 2020, 2021 school year in which many of the parents kept their children's at home due to COVID-19 pandemic. This district has been authorized to submit a request for funds related to the increased enrollment in the amount of 7,227. I have some recommendations that I'd like to read. I move the Board of Education approve the donation from Jacob Blanchard, Eagle Scout, in the amount of $300 for PVC display for Lincoln Elementary School.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Jacob Blanchard, Eagle Scout, in the amount of $300 for PVC displays for Lincoln Elementary School. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the executed construction contracts, bonds, and certificate of insurance with ports and construction for the central kitchen mechanical replacement project in the amount of 1,443,700.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with ports and construction for the central kitchen mechanical replacement project in the amount of 1,443,700. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Tricon Construction for Hempstead High School kitchen upgrade product in the amount of 448,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Tricon Construction for Hempstead High School kitchen upgrades project in the amount of 448,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the recommendation to reject all bids for the Hoover boiler replacement project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to reject all bids for the Hoover boiler replacement project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for fiscal year 2022, 2023 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section 257.14 Code of Iowa.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section 257.14 Code of Iowa. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution as part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. This district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for funding related to the fiscal year 2022 statewide voluntary preschool program enrollment, increased enrollment in the amount of 7,227 dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution as part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for funding related to fiscal year 22 SWVPP increased enrollment in the amount of 7,227. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for that update. Thank you. Now we turn to Ed Programs with Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. As you likely know by now, these two committees, the Facilities and Support Services and the one I'll report on, which is Educational Programs and Policy Committees, are where the bulk of the work of the board's conversation about these issues take place. And so when you see not much discussion up here, it's because we've had lengthy discussions about them in those committee meetings. So I'm pleased to report on the work of the Educational Programs and Policy Committee from this past week. Several things came before the group. I'll give you a quick rundown of them. Then I have a motion to make about one of those things. We were pleased to hear from Julie Lang, Director of Digital Literacy, and Val Lowenberg, district mentor. They brought the committee an update on the online school application process. Historically, there have been a very small number of schools or districts or entities in the state who were certified by the Iowa Department of Education to serve as certified schools for online instruction. More and more schools, it used to be three, it's now over 20. And those 20 school districts are likely about to include the Dubuque Community School District. And Julie and Val brought us excellent work, which really reported on their preparation for us as a district to submit our application to the Department of Ed to become an Iowa-approved online school. We go from having a program that's allowed under pandemic rules to being an actual approved school for having online learning and providing that for students within our district who wish to be a part of that. We have about 300 now who's, for whom the students and their parents have chosen that format for learning. And once approved as an actual online learning school, should that happen, we would be able to also have others from around the state who could participate in our program. Other large districts, Cedar Rapids has recently done that. Iowa City has recently done it. I'm not, many others as well, about 17 in all. So we're excited to hear that update and in a moment, I'll bring a motion forward on behalf of the committee about submitting that approval, or that application. Secondly, we heard a presentation on social, emotional learning and programs that are being added. This district can be very proud of the work that's being done in bringing a focus certainly on high academic work with our students, but also in the area of social and emotional learning. And so Mimi Holsinger, who is the Director of Behavior and Learning Supports, updated the committee and brought us the next layer of work that's being added to the social and emotional learning competencies. This one includes five areas of competencies that would have additional programming brought forward. They are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. We believe those to be a part of a well-rounded public school education and so we were very pleased to hear from Mimi about the work that's going forward. The CASL standards are a part of the state standard, CASL. And that stands for, I've got that here, Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. It is the gold standard for what we as a district would like to be providing for our students. And indeed, this new effort would add already to the things that are in place and would be a wonderful addition to our programming for students. So right now, they'd be added to the second step curriculum that's currently being piloted in five elementary schools. They are Eisenhower, Fulton, Irving, Lincoln, and Marshall. That's a scattering across the district that gives us a chance to try out these new, this new program and then to add and expand to it into the other schools, should we find that that's what would be most desirable. Then we heard from Lisa Tabacorse, Then we heard from Lisa Tabacor, the Executive Director of Elementary Education, who updated the board on the Belief Grant. This is an opportunity to explore in the area of preschool programming, to look at work with community partners in the area of preschool and daycare. It would allow the district to actually join forces with our community preschool programs and possibly explore a standalone preschool center. We know, as we read the Telegraph Herald and have other points of awareness, we know that Dubuque is looking to add more opportunities for our preschool children to have programming available to them. And so this could be a wonderful addition to that, so pleased about that. We worked with two policies, public information and student rosters, which we made some modifications. Those were approved in the consent agenda a moment ago when we approved that. Then Superintendent Rheingans brought us an update on the COVID-19 data for our district. He was happy to report that the known active cases are decreasing, decreasing, with many district buildings already at zero. That's good news. In comparing, we also looked at attendance rates. Superintendent Rheingans brought us information on attendance from the 2019, 20 school year, then skipping forward to this school year, 21, 22. And we were, we knew that there was some additional absence due to COVID and other issues as well, and happily heard that the increase in absences is limited to four percent. So that was good news for the board to hear. We also heard from Brenda Duvall, Executive Director of Special Education, who updated the board on the court case involving, federal court case involving mask use for special education. And Ms. Duvall was strongly assured the board that the IEP process is in place in this district to ensure that district students who need these accommodations because of their medical condition, that they are absolutely getting those supports. So we were pleased to hear that. Mike Siz brought us information about the mobile vaccination labs in a partnership with Mercy One. We'll be able to have that up and running in the next few weeks for families who are looking to have vaccination opportunities for their children. And lastly, the superintendent search. None of us is eager to have that happen, but it needs to go forward. And we are indeed deeply engrossed in it. The board has the month of February very busily engaged in the process of finding our next superintendent as Mr. Rheingans goes on to his next opportunity at Keystone AEAs, the chief administrator. So we have conducted interviews for the seven semifinalists. We were very pleased with the finalists that we had available, semifinalists we had available for our review. Had excellent interviews, and with difficulty, we narrowed that field to three finalists. And those three finalists will be announced next Friday, who they are. Not who the final selection is, but who are the three finalists, who will then the following week, the week of February 21 through 25, will, the board will be conducting finalist interviews that week along with other teams of interviewers that includes staff and parents and community and higher education partners and other business partners. We have large, a large schedule of interviews for each of our three candidates. Each will be involved with interviews throughout an entire day and into the evening. So we will for sure make them tired and hopefully get to know each of those three finalists very well. And then finally, our selection of our next superintendent will take place sometime the week of February 28th. So the community can expect to hear that we will be announcing that sometime during that last week of February and early March. So I now have a motion to make on behalf of the committee regarding the online school application. I move that the Board of Education approve the application for the district's online school.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the application for the district's online school. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to new business. And we have a Black History Month proclamation. Should I read this first? Okay, so I'm going to read it, and then we'll have a motion. Whereas Carter G. Woodson established a week in 1926, bringing attention to the contributions of the Black community, setting the foundation for what would eventually become Black History Month. And whereas Black History Month was first officially observed in the United States in 1976, recognizing African-Americans' contributions to the history of the United States and the world. And whereas in February and throughout the year, we recognize and celebrate the significant cultural, economic, and social contributions made by African-Americans that helped shape our nation. And whereas the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History has established Black Health and Wellness to be the 2022 Black History Month theme, honoring the legacy of Black scholars and medical practitioners as well as other ways of knowing throughout the African diaspora. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District takes great pride and honors the historical and current contributions of members of our Black community in countless professions and fields, including education, law, government, business, science, sports, the arts, brave service in the United States Armed Forces, and countless others. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as National Black History Month, signed this fourteenth day of February 2022.
I move the Board of Education approve the Black History Month proclamation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Black History Month proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It's another motion.
I move that the, oh, go ahead.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number eight-two-seven-six-five-six at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number eight-two-seven-six-five-six at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any board member administrative issues that we need to discuss, not on the agenda?
Maybe just a quick point of clarification. I know people utilize next in different ways, but by next Friday, Nancy meant this Friday.
I do.
So this Friday, next Friday, so the next Friday, which is this Friday, the three finalists will be announced for the superintendent search.
Thanks for clarifying that.
With great reluctance to let our superintendent go.
Any other issues or items? Seeing none, we are adjourned.